We're gonna go ahead and get started. I know that Councilman Conyers is here, but I think he may be stuck on a teleconference for work. I can understand that, because that's happened to me a lot. All right, in our work session, the first item is a discussion of the procurement of a 2026 T-380 Sidewinder Garbage Truck Automated Side Loader from Sourcewell Contract. Mr. Latt?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
This is Murray Cameron. He is the city's sanitation supervisor.
Thank you, Murray.
He's put together this information for y'all to help y'all understand why we are asking to hopefully move forwards with your permission, obviously, to go ahead and order a side loader garbage truck because of the lead time to hopefully get ahead of the procurement process that happens in October when everybody else is starting at the same time. But this is Murray Cameron.
How you doing, counsel? Nice to see ya, mayor. Yeah, our fleet's made up of six trucks currently. Everything ranging from 2015 all the way to 2023. The two trucks that we have that are the most aged is running about 111,000 to 120,000 miles currently. You're talking that 15 and that 17 that is on my five-year plan. That, you know, they're always in mechanic shops, they're constantly leaking hydraulic fluid all over these neighborhoods, and we're just trying to weed out the possibility of any more of that kind of stuff happening. The main reason is that pre-order, because we want to try to get the ball rolling, get ahead of those, like he was saying, that are gonna be coming in with the, with all their budget proposals. Trucks will be lined up and waiting for, you know, all the budgets to get processed, and I think if we can pre-order this one, we can kind of get ahead of it, just to hopefully get one of these out of the fleet.
Y'all have any questions for us?
Yeah, question, counsel? Okay. So, do we have any type of schedule right now? You're looking to go to a five-year schedule? Are you just, are you basing it on mileage? What are you basing it on now?
So, the five-year plan is what our goal, right now, that's on the, it's kind of not feasible at the current moment that we're at with the age of the trucks from, but that is a goal that we're working towards, is to try to get on a five-year plan to where we have a little better rotation so the trucks don't get up to as many years old as they are, hours, and it's quite impressive if you ever want to see the statistics of how many times an auto truck actually has tipped in a year. It's ridiculous.
It's in the hundreds of thousands.
It's, they average around a thousand cans a night of tipping, four nights a week, so, I mean, and there's, there's six trucks, so, I mean, it's unreal the amount of times that they don't, and the wear and tear that's on them. But that's what the, the plan is, is this is our five-year plan of truck rotations as of right now. So, and this, this is the, basically, the first step in that process.
So, if I may, council president?
Yes, sir.
So, Mr., so, so on the fifth year, due to mileage or, or hours, is there precedent on either of those? Are you gonna combine the two variables there, hours and hours and mileage, or do they line up? Hours and the mileage, is that what we're gonna do it every fifth year after they get to that number that I see on the scale?
So, it's, uh...
Is that our benchmarks?
Yes, that is correct, but it, it's a kind of a, it's turned into a standing operating procedure for other sanitation departments that five years is roughly the amount of years that you get out of a truck before it. It's costing you more in maintenance than the value of the truck.
Yeah, they're pushing 30,000 in two years. I mean, I think with the growing number of residents in the city, I think it's gonna even be more and more and more. That, this is a little unrealistic, I know that, but at the same time, it's sort of a goal. If we can get something started soon, the sooner the better.
What's this gonna do to your budget?
Well, the current budget that we have right now, this is in there. This truck is in there. We're just, we're just asking...
What does it do to the 2020, 24, 2025 budget? How does that compare? They're gonna make your budget go up 10% ordering two trucks, or is it just a bump in the road?
Well, we were asking to not actually spend the money until the 2026 budget is approved, but go ahead and order it now with a guarantee that we are gonna purchase this vehicle. That's what we're hoping that y'all give us permission to go ahead and move forwards with it now.
Trying to beat all the other orders that are coming.
Right.
It's got 190 day lead time.
Right. Well, I understand, I'm just, I'm just still trying to, did you want two? I'm seeing two in that, I saw two in the first year. I'm just trying to understand what it does to the budget. You had to answer...
We would absolutely love to have two, but we understand that that's most likely not feasible.
We know we have two that are, that are slowly going downhill.
We may tell you we like, we want two, though, but we gotta have a number.
I think, I think it's, it's, you know, to keep up with the current situation.
You want us to give you a blank check? Just go out, get whatever?
Sustainability, you know, I mean, two trucks would be ideal. So, I'm, I was really hoping for two at some point, but I was going for one today just to...
When you say...
Just try to get the realistic ball rolling with the pre-order.
Yeah, there are other requests in the budget. I mean, obviously, I've met with Georgia Murray about this, but, I mean, I think we can probably swing one in the next budget, and you can ask him the same question. There's a lot of other equipment I'm not sure that we could swing two and still, you know, present y'all with a balanced budget. That's why I said I can, definitely, we could order one, but I don't know that we can swing two. And I think we said the other one could limp along until next year.
That's great.
So, that's where we are, and this one's estimated anywhere between 300 and 350,000.
Okay, that's the number we're looking for.
We're, yeah, we would take the other one and try to make it our back, backup truck, try to, until next year.
Can you wait until next council meeting to have a resolution on there, to approve?
Yeah.
As long as the budget's balanced.
Right.
Right, and that's what, what, what we're working with right now. We have one budgeted in there for this year. We're just asking to move forwards with it now.
But look, I mean, and I don't know about you, council members, but, I mean, I don't have a problem with you asking for two. That's why I asked what you did in your, but you may have 15 other pieces of equipment that, that you don't need to order this year, so you, you had room in there.
Yeah, well, right now...
I mean, I know we buy a lot of equipment from that.
Yeah, unfortunately, right now, our need is stronger than what our ability to support is. So, I mean, like, we've already got other things that we really need, too.
Right.
Right.
And this truck should be more efficient than the trucks that we bought in the past, right? We're gonna kind of upgrade on efficiency since we're spending the money.
Well, it's basically the same. I mean, we are, we're looking at a different chassis, a different truck chassis than what we were working with before, hoping that it's gonna be a little bit better, but it's gonna be the same style, same body, just newer, obviously. As, as the trucks age, the, I don't, I don't believe that any of the hydraulic hoses, the replacement hoses are ever as good. It's almost like when you have a boat or a car, the replacement parts are never as good as the original parts, and the hydraulic hoses just never hold up to the PSI that the truck produces after you replace it once. So, I mean, is it gonna be better, an upgrade? Absolutely will be an upgrade. Is it gonna be a different design? It's really not. It's the same design.
I wish you guys, yeah, I mean, yeah, I'm just saying, you're here.
Guys, okay with a resolution on the next agenda?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Sounds like you got a lot of use out of the last one.
Yeah, oh, it's getting there. All right. Thank y'all.
We're all business.
Appreciate it.
Building trucks.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, guys.
Appreciate it.
All right. Committee updates? Councilman Martin?
I don't have any.
Councilman Conyers?
No updates at this time, sir.
Councilman Robinson?
Uh, yes, I attended the Historic Preservation Commission meeting the other night, and they are on the verge of getting something. I think we agreed to the parameters of demolition review that we are gonna present, or that they are gonna present our next council work session.
They ready for that?
They are. They were, we had a member or two out of town, and they wanted to be ready with the language exactly how they wanted it before they presented it, and so I think we're gonna be ready to present that at the next work session.
I know that they've asked in the last couple of meetings, and I wanted to make sure you were comfortable with that, and the mayor was comfortable with that before they brought it to the work session.
Council president, I do have something. Katie Bolton, she's on the pedestrian and bicycle committee, and I'm not quite on that committee, but I'm on the strategic strategy for our cycling and our pathways as far as our bicycle paths. She wanted to meet with us as a council, try to get us together to go over those, over those bike paths again. So, we need to get together to get with her so we can get a better understanding and maybe take a field trip or something so we can say...
You talking about the triangle, or are you talking about on the paved road?
Triangle.
Okay.
The small part, the small one, yeah. So, just gonna put that bug in you guys' ear publicly.
Okay.
Right?
Take a trip, oh, well, yeah, I guess. You can't discuss it when you do it, the problem, so...
Well, I mean, just take a look and see what...
Two at a time.
She, yeah, Katie had sent an email and just gave us a few locations around the state and even some in, like, West Florida that have some biking trails similar to what we're trying to develop that she would like for y'all to look at. So, it may even be just a day trip if you have some extra time, which I'm not sure anybody has that, to be able to run over to Pensacola and look at the bike trails over there. Just, she feels like everybody, if you have a visual of it, may understand a little bit better what they're talking about. So, she, but she did send a list, and she said, you know, if a couple council members could get together and go on that trip, you know, go to one of the places together, look at, that would be great, and she could go along with them, but she did send a list, so I can forward that to y'all.
Right. I didn't have a committee update, but I did have, I want to throw something out to the council. We've had a few inquiries about whether or not the City of Fairhope is going to write a letter in opposition to the mud dumping in Mobile Bay. Are we going to, you know, and, and do we want to look at alternatives, just, I don't think that any of us are against the port and dredging the Ship Channel, but I guess it's what they do with the spoils of that. So, I would like for y'all to just think about that and maybe formulate an opinion as to whether or not you think, and maybe you already have formulated opinion as to whether or not, you know, you want to send a letter. Do we need, there's, there's a form letter that we've been given, are you comfortable with that? Do you want to, do you want to alter it somewhat? Do you want to start from scratch, write a new, and just, what are your thoughts? And you don't necessarily even have to answer that right now, but, you know, you can get your thoughts through the clerk and go from there.
Yeah, I think we're trying to put a resolution together at one point, but I think that's something that's possible. We just gotta see what the details are as far as putting that instrument together, you know, what's, what's the vocabulary, what does it look like, what is it saying, those type of things, you know?
Well, just to put it out there, I mean, I don't think anyone's look like we want to stifle the growth of the port in Mobile, but I think we probably all want to also be environmentally conscious, right?
That's exactly right.
So, there's a balance.
That's right.
Okay. Mayor, do you have thoughts on that at all?
No, but I do have a draft that I'd be happy to share with all of you, and I have spoken with some representatives of the port. I did want to reach out to Mobile NEP also and get some comments from them, but I do think the resolution that we have is very diplomatic. I mean, obviously, it says that we support the port, but we also want to be good stewards of our environment in Mobile Bay and, and also, you know, want to be friendly with the Corps, obviously, because we work with them quite often. We're just asking for them to maybe use a different mechanism for the dredging when it comes to the spoils. So, anyway, I'll send that to y'all and let y'all review it, and if you want to discuss it the next work session, then y'all can collectively discuss it and see if we want to do a resolution or send a letter.
Their timeliness that they're working on?
No, I mean, they had, Mobile Baykeeper had gone to DC the past couple weeks, but anytime we can send something in support of it, they'd be happy for us to do that.
Yeah, I did get a couple of calls asking if we would participate in a resolution that some of the other municipalities have already participated in. So, it seems like from their representation, they want that voice to be out there as far as what Fairhope says or thinks.
All right. Any other committee updates? Let's move on to department heads. Darrell, not to put you on the spot, but to put you on the spot, let's start with you because I want to talk about the item you'd like to walk onto tonight's agenda.
Yes, sir. So, so we had a, we had a well issue at Treatment Plant One, and we're getting it repaired as we speak. They're working, they're working on pulling the pump, well, well number eight. I've been working with Kim and Aaron and Lisa and trying to get, we did get our three quotes. They came in very competitive. This is an unbudgeted item, but we do have a budget for it, working with Kim.
So, what's the last one?
Yeah, well, number four, it was, it was the same, it was the same issue.
So, we have a submersible pump?
So, the submersible pump, we'll be pumping tomorrow morning.
Okay. Darrell, I did call Griner after we spoke, and I'd asked them, would, would they be doing a failure analysis on that as well?
Okay.
Just wondering if there's something overstressing, and he talked about certain installation techniques and some other things that, and he said that they would, they would take a look at that and see if there's anything that needs to be done as far as the install.
Okay.
And he went and mentioned that, you know, these are now stainless turbines instead of brass, and they're a little harder, and they'll dig into the bowl and a lot of that, so...
Sure, yeah, absolutely.
I hope you didn't mind me asking.
Nope, not at all.
All right. Questions for Darrell on that? So, I'm gonna ask you guys to amend the agenda tonight, and if so, we will add that as number 21 on tonight's agenda. I thought the price was very reasonable. The quotes were all in family, so should be a good quote. Any other items, Darrell?
No, sir.
Okay, you'll have an easy night.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, who's next?
Thank you, sir.
Oh, thank you.
Good evening. I'll cover my agenda items first, and I do have another thing to at least speak with you about. And these three agenda items have some relationship, 13, 14, and 15. 13 is the selection of professional construction engineering inspection services with Sawgrass for the Bond Secure and Grand Drainage Project, and 14 is the actual awarding of that bid. I know that we had the opportunity to take a couple of council members down well before we advertised for bid to look at the granite bond secure problem down there. The good news is we, we were pretty close in what we thought that price would be, and we have pretty good confidence of the fact that we received eight competitive bids on, on that project, and we are asking you to consider awarding it to the low bidder, in this case, was C Thornton Incorporated. And 15, when we met with a couple of council members on site, if you recall or may not recall, Bond Secure, as it goes north from that intersection, is an unopened right-of-way that has a pretty good ravine that, that parallels and traverses it, goes down and then comes back up, and then Bond Secure becomes a road again. We have a power line circuit, and if I butcher this, Ben will come up and correct me, that is aerial there, that has really tough accessibility issues, and the last time we had a tree trimming crew in there, it was, it was pretty rough because the only access was through a developed property and, and there was issues with lawns being rutted and trees being contacted. And the best thing about this circuit, it is a point A to point B circuit, meaning that there's really, there's only one drop off of it, and it can be picked up at, at the intersection. So, while we were contemplating this project, Ben asked to see if we could go ahead and convert that aerial on that unopened right-of-way through that tough terrain to an underground electric. So, we got with, got with some folks that do this for a living. I learned a little bit, put together a plan set, got it out on the street, and really got a very favorable price back, and we're asking you to consider awarding the contract for that work to Along Boring at a cost of $89,800. And we would work these projects basically parallel and in conjunction, get the power out of the way, get the drainage problem fixed, and hopefully, no one in, in the current administration or the staff will ever have to spend any time down in that hole again in, in our lifetimes with resolving these. So, we are asking for consideration of selection of the engineer to do CE and I, and we really want to have that services here because we have some real sensitivities with the neighbors, and we want to be very respectful of those sensitivities and make sure that easements and restoration and everything meets that high standard to make sure that we're good neighbors in doing that work in that, that tough site. And then, of course, we do want to award the project because we, we're, we're not, we're, it's one of those is that if we don't do something one day, we'll be replacing roadways, and we don't want to be in that situation. And I'll be glad to answer any question on those three projects, and Ben can do a much better job of explaining how electricity goes from being in the air to underground, but I, I've learned a lot, but I'm still not sure how all that ends up working in the end, so...
I have one question, one question for you, Richard. The quantity on that quote, is that 800 feet? Is that 800 linear feet of boring?
Times four.
Times four?
Yes.
Okay.
They're going to do three, there's three axle wires have to go in the ground, and they're gonna put a spare in case one of them acts up one day, they have an extra conduit to pull a replacement through.
Oh, yes, we have four four X bores now.
Yes.
Yeah.
So, it would be 3,200 linear feet of boring total.
No, sir, that's, that's just, that's the pipe and the bore, and then we're gonna do everything else in-house. On that wire, there's a 10,000 foot...
But it is the pipe.
Yes, sir, it's the pipe, that's the pipe.
Okay. And you're gonna pull the lines?
So, they'll, they'll bore them in, pull it in, and then we'll order the wire terminators, poles, all the devices, and I've got it budgeted for this upcoming year for the wire because it's a $10,000 minimum order on it, but it, we put it in stock, and if something happens, we use that wire to refeed it back in, so...
That going under that gully?
It, it will, yes.
Yes.
It'll go under the gully and then rise her up, one or two spans up on Bond Secure.
And it will go under the sanitary sewer that crosses perpendicular.
Questions, counsel? 14, 15. Thank you.
All right, and just as a side note, I handed you out a little handout. The mayor's office a while back received a consideration or request from the Taylor Oaks subdivision, which, if you're not familiar with it, it's a neat little subdivision off of Taylor Street, kinda north Fairhope or maybe south Montrose. And the, that subdivision annexed into the city at some point in time, so every, every home, every resident there is a city of Fairhope citizen and resident. As you know, not that long ago, the county resurfaced Taylor Road and then made a petition to us to, to take that road into the city inventory, so Taylor Street is now a city road from, from Main Street to its terminus to the east. And the question from the POA president was, what would it take for the rest of the streets, which is Dove Coat Lane, which is a mug handle loop that services nine or 10 lots in the interior of the little subdivision, to be entered into the city inventory for perpetual maintenance? And so, the mayor asked me to, to reach out and share with him, and our policy that we've always followed is that if a road is brought up to a new standard, it is qualified to be considered for a dedication to the city, and you have the ability as the council to decide whether it should be accepted into the inventory. And the Property Owners Association is considering very seriously about entering into a contract with a paving contractor to resurface that road, bring it up to a new standard, and then come before you to have you consider a dedication and acceptance for perpetual maintenance. And the challenge is, is that I don't blame a small neighborhood before making a big expenditure to have some kind of knowledge that, that, that y'all are aware of what the ask will be after the fact and, and be, you know, consider, be willing to consider that. George, and I don't speak for George, but George and I have talked about this, if they do what they need to do, it's already a 20-foot road, it has curbing, curbing gutter, it has drainage, it's actually in very good shape, it's just, it was built in 1998, so it's gotten to that age where it needs to be resurfaced. And, and I told the council, the POA president, that I'd at least introduce this to you and talk to the mayor about it. Don't know when the ask is gonna come, it's sometime in the future, but before they make a sign on the dotted line with the paving contractor, spend $18,000, and it's gonna be assessed to a dozen homes, they, they want to have at least a feeling from y'all whether that is something that would be receptive here in a month or two if they made that petition to you. And Mr. David Lewis here is the president of the POA, and I'm sure he would love to share anything with you, but I told him I'd at least give you full warning of it and seek any, any concerns or feedback that you have.
I got a couple of questions, and you may have covered this. I was trying to read all this as you were talking as well. Are these City of Fairhope, are these all within the City of Fairhope?
Yes, 100% of the lots in Taylor Oaks are annexed in. You know, for whatever reason, in the weirdness of 1998, that was actually in the county. It was originally, when you go back and look at the preliminary plat, it looked like it, it was intended to be a public road, but when it was final plat recorded, it was just recorded as a private road, and, and then at some point in time after that, it annexed into the city, and then Taylor Road was brought into the city, Taylor Street, excuse me, was brought into the city inventory. And it's a reasonable question, what would it take to be able to have the same consideration for the adjacent road that serves the neighborhood? And, and what we've done in the past is always, if we end up with a new road, which a resurfaced road, and they have one little thing on their drainage they'll have to fix, it's not, it's not major, one invert in a box, if those things are done, it's basically a completely rehabilitated road, and, and if we enter it in the inventory, we're not before you for another 20 to 25 years talking about resurfacing it, so...
And if I read this right, Richard, it says that the back of the curb outward shall remain private and not under the maintenance obligation of the City of Fairhope. We don't have a certain amount of right-of-way that we would be obligated to maintain?
In this case, how it was recorded, it, they would be dedicating a right-of-way easement, and the, if you hadn't been in the neighborhood, it's, it's very landscaped, very developed and everything else. Utilities are really not part of this equation. That's all been handled through other, other means of easements and things of that nature. So, no, we would, we would only be accepting from the back of curb inward and the drainage shown in the exhibit, just like we would with any other subdivision. When that drainage leaves the roadway, that still remains with the POA as their maintenance responsibility, and they've got a little detention area in the, in the southeast corner that would remain their responsibility as well.
So, it, it's already paved, Taylor Oaks is already paved, and I know, I know sometimes in Montrose, some people prefer the little lane and, and smaller road, but this one's already kind of up to the standards.
It's 20 feet of asphalt, and it has concrete curbing gutter on about 75% of it. For whatever reason, they didn't do a little bit on what would be the east side coming back off the mug handle, but they didn't need to catch drainage there, so... And as, as George commented, it's really a better road than about, than a bunch of roads we already have in the inventory. So, yes, it's, it's 20 feet wide, it has curbing gutter, it has drainage, so it, and if, if the POA resurfaces per the specifications that we said they have to meet for the wearing surface, fix the one little issue with the drainage, it's basically a new road.
The new, you're talking about two inches of asphalt, then?
I think they're doing one and a half, since it's an overlay, so, with some spot milling, so, that's what we normally do on our...
But we're not, we're not receiving, or would not be if we agreed to this, be receiving a road that's just in, torn up, and they just want to get rid of the expense, right?
No, well, we'd be receiving a, a new road, basically.
That's what I want.
And that's what we've done with any consideration, is that you bring it back up to as new, as built, as designed conditions, if we find it acceptable for consideration for dedication and acceptance.
And the benefit to them is they don't have to worry about the ongoing maintenance down the road.
Yeah.
Perpetual, perpetual maintenance.
Yeah, if nothing happens today, whether it's this summer or next summer, those residents are gonna pay to resurface that road, okay? The, the thing is, if they resurface it now and come and get a favorable recommendation it now and come and get a favorable recommendation from y'all to accept it, in 25 years, they don't have an assessment, it just is part of the road resurfacing inventory.
So, Richard, we. Not like a public street. I mean, garbage trucks, you use it, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
So, and you're saying that the drainage, there's no drainage issues right now with water or any of those things that we're taking on, any other issues that we don't?
Reinforced concrete pipe, it's got S-inlets, a single wing and a double wing and a junction blocks, it's not blind, it has a manhole. So, no, it's, we, before we even talked with them, we sent our inspector out, did a full inspection of it to make sure there wasn't some underlying structural issue. And Mr. Lewis is here, I don't know if you want to hear from him or not. He, he's been very nice to work with, and he was just, he's excited to get something done, but he, he doesn't want to run off the cliff without a, at least a thought of a parachute, so.
Thank you.
Mr. Burrell?
Yes, sir.
May I have your heard?
Yes, sir.
Good evening. I'm David Lewis. So, our purpose today is frankly, I don't know a lot about city management, but my primary reason to be here tonight is to thank Sheri Sullivan and Richard Johnson for kind of giving us the parameters that might enable us to get this project accomplished. Richard mentioned that we were in the process of contemplating this contract. We actually executed the contract. We received the contract from HCL Contractors LLC on Friday evening, and we executed it this morning and put it back in their inboxes. So, the contract has been executed. So, with all due respect and with our eyes wide open, we know that there's a possibility that we're going to pay for this road to be repaired, and that, and that it might not end up being, you know, pulled into the city. So, we're, we're taking that risk. We just respectfully request good due consideration for this. Happy to answer any questions.
Counsel, any comments, any questions for Mr. Lewis?
No, I don't have a problem with it.
Honestly, I think they're all in the city. I mean, surprised you're not, the street's not already under public maintenance.
That area was a little convoluted, circuitous, as far as easements.
Crazy people live there.
Yeah.
I live there, I'm sorry. I live up there, not there, but.
I know you do.
In the area.
Yeah, in the area, yeah.
Well, thank you all for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis, appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. All right, George?
So, we've got a couple of items on the agenda tonight. First one is number nine, the request to move forwards with the purchase of the tulip bulbs for the 2026 budget. Pretty much do the same thing every year. Do I have any questions about that?
Budgeted, right?
Yes, sir. The second one is item number 10, and I would like to request that we amend that resolution if y'all are willing to. We, in the traffic committee meeting today, identified a, no, two, two more crosswalks that we need to add to this list that we're addressing in this one. And we add $5,000 that will cover that one. And if there is any other that are identified by staff that need to be handled, if we can amend it $5,000, that would be fantastic.
There should be $75,350?
Yes, sir. No, ma'am, that's just under.
And that's a not to exceed as well, I mean.
Right. And even with that, I'll still be slightly under budget. Should be good on that one. Then I also have agenda item number 11, which is Wayne's Pest Control. We, when we put together the bid for Wayne's Pest Control for this year, we had a substation that got left, left off the list, the substation, the new one out on Morphe Avenue. And when we asked why it had not been treated, they were kind enough to point out to us that it was not on the contract. So, that's what that is. This is the request to add that to the contract.
The smallest dollar amount you'll ever vote on up here in your life, I promise you.
I'm appreciative. I get to witness it.
Wow. I thought I was misreading that.
I did, I looked at it three times. I don't know if I've ever seen that before.
Then, agenda item number 12 is, so, a couple of months back, we approved, y'all approved us to order the new chiller for the library. We have gone out and gotten the pricing back, and, and we got Johnson Control was the low bidder. We actually put it out for bid, and Johnson Controls was the low bidder at $34,603. So, we're looking to move forwards with that if y'all approve. Any other questions?
Say that, did you say whether or not that came in under budget or on budget or?
It's, it's not over budget, it's pretty much right on. Like, we're spending, I actually think I'm a little under. I'm just a, I'm what? Yeah, I was just a little under. But I'm pretty dang close.
Questions for George, counsel?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, George.
See, who's going to cover number five? And we will, we'll probably get started with the council meeting a little early tonight, but we will wait until six to have number five since it's advertised as a public hearing. Yeah, we'll, we'll just wait until that time, if you don't mind. Okay, number six is self-explanatory. I think number seven, mayor, do you want to touch on number seven for just a moment?
I can cover seven and eight. So, I think it was last meeting that we approved, it may have been a couple of meetings ago, we approved $5,000 expenditure from a, the community development grant that we get from Energy Southeast. We still have $5,000 left of that $10,000 grant, and I'm asking for that additional $5,000 to be put towards some signage at the pier. We're trying to do a lot of the nicer plaques down at the pier, especially at the entrance, and it's, it's pretty costly to do those signs. So, agenda item seven is allowing me to spend that $5,000 on some signage. And then number eight is a complete list of the signs that we'll be ordering and, and the cost of those. Those were not budgeted, but there are some budget adjustments that we'll be able to cover those along with the, along with the grant.
And that does include spending the additional $5,000?
It does.
Eight does?
It does.
Okay. Questions for the mayor? Okay, let's see, is Jeff here? Number 16, the CitizenServe Software, that's just a subscription, that we have multiple, multiple subscriptions of that. I guess we're just growing in employees. Jeff, when you see to add some subscriptions?
Getting enough licenses. We've got a, it started off with the building department, planning was next, now we've got utilities using it, so we're just adding more licenses. It'll give us a total of, I think, 34 licenses. No. Bless you. I guess the, the software's proven useful for them, so want to add more users.
Questions for Jeff? Do you have any other items?
I don't, no. All right, thank you.
All right, thank you, Jeff. All right, let's see, you want to talk about this agreement between Coastal Alabama and the police department? You want to hear? Chief, you want to talk about that?
17.
17.
17. Just the MOU between Coastal and us. Pretty simple. Anybody have any questions about that for the chief?
That's just for protection, just to understand that we're working with them.
That's correct.
Yeah, there's no monies involved.
All right, number 18, I could probably cover that if I need to. You want to cover that, mayor?
I know I can, but Hunter, I know, said that he had also reached out to you because he wasn't going to be here tonight. This is part of the scanning project that they've done for, for the planning department, scanning documents into, scanning the documents for planning and zoning. So, this is just in addition to that, and it's, it's a $2,500 not to exceed, so it just increases the amount of that contract.
Let me, let me also state, when I first read that, I thought that that was just for transporting the documents from Tallahassee to here, and I about had it come apart. I'm like, well, I'm going to rent a U-Haul trailer and get a city truck and go pick it up and drive it back. But it's a little bit more involved, and it was not originally included. We thought that they were going to destroy the documents for one, and now they have to pack everything up, box it, and that's a, that's a little bit more.
Find it and package it and everything, yeah, and then deliver it back.
So, it's a lot more than, than what we were, when we were thinking. So, for $2,500, I said, no, maybe I won't drive over there with a U-Haul and pick them up, so. I ask you all to add that on. All right, number 19, this is authorizing the mayor to resubmit the grant application for the AIP Airport Improvement Program. This has to do with the runway revitalization. And what I think what happens is that, is that we were hoping to widen our taxiway to use as a temporary runway, but the state aviation council said, and ALDOT said, no, we're not going to allow you to do that. So, now, we had had a taxiway that had been widened. We actually have to make it narrower, believe it or not, so that people don't try to land on that. And then afterwards, we're going to have to go back and widen it again. But I think the total price of the construction is actually going down. And I want to say the new grant submission may be for a lesser amount.
We're going to make it more narrow, and then we're going to go back and, that seems really inefficient.
It's, yeah, it doesn't always make sense, but that's what they're requiring us to do. The good news is, the price went down.
Okay.
Yeah. This is a grant though, correct? Yes.
It's a, it's a, it's a 90% grant.
90.
And then the state will kick in 5%, and the airport authority will pay 5%. So, they're paying 5 cents on the dollar.
95, 5.
And this is actually the largest project in the history of the Fairhope Airport Authority.
Love to see if the airport could get us data on just how many flights are coming in now. I know that.
I can get you that number easily. Yeah, we, they report that every month. And, you know, it's, it's, it's thousands and thousands.
I think their daily average was running about 120 to 130 planes through a day.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
It's probably, but it's probably more like 5,000 a month. And, you know, the new lease structure, where they're paying a surcharge on the fuel that they sell, is, is paying big dividends. Their, their income is as high as it's, as it's ever been.
Great.
So, they're, they're doing really well. They've got a lot of new tenants on the east side, the ground leases, you know, and the people, you've seen the big hangars, those are all built with private money. And 30 to 40 years, those will come back and be owned by the airport authority. And we're collecting ground lease every year on those too. So, things are going, going pretty well there. And chief, application for a special events license? All right, that was item 20.
You want to add the well?
And then, as mentioned earlier, yeah, number 21, we'll add the, the pump repair. I'll read that more. Does everybody have a copy of that resolution? Everybody's got it? Okay. All right. I think that was it. I only skipped number six because that's self-explanatory. And number five, we've got about, I don't know if that's right, right, about 517. Let's take a, let's take about a five or six minute break and come back. And we'll, we'll get started with the mayor's report, council comments, and then public participation. And once we hit the six o'clock hour, we'll have the public hearing.